Prayer. I call this meeting to order. Councilwoman Cook will lead us in pledge and Councilwoman Nakhan will lead us in prayer.
In the name of the Father, and Son, and the Holy Spirit. Amen. Dear Father, thank you for creating this opportunity to conduct our business. Let our hearts be humble and selfish and in good faith. May you bless our thoughts and words that are in us. In Jesus's name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
To the flag of the United States of America, to the couple who wishes to enter, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Beautiful. Thank you both. We welcome you to the Lafayette City Council meeting. As presiding officer and chair, I'd like to announce the following. This is a public hearing. To address the council on any item on this agenda, please fill out the speaker form and submit it to the clerk prior to the call of the agenda item, or you will not be given the opportunity to speak. Staff assistance is available if needed. Items for submission to the council should be handed to council clerk Ms. Veronica Williams, seated to my left in the middle, who's not sitting there now, but she will be in a few minutes. When addressing the council, state your name and title for the official record. The three-minute rule will be in effect. No debating or confrontational statements will be allowed. The front row to my left is for media only. Food and drinks are not allowed in the auditorium. Please silence your all phones or electronic devices. Meeting procedures are by resolution and not Robert's Rules of Order. All documents with reference to the meetings can be found on the LCG website. And finally, the council encourages your involvement on boards and commissions. If interested, call 291-8800. Chair announcements. Item number 10, CO017-2021, relative to the two new city marshal positions, is being deferred indefinitely by the request of the CAO to provide time to clarify a couple of points with the marshal. Items number 23 and 24, relative to the Protect the City Committee appointments, Mr. Ronald Arseneau has withdrawn himself from consideration. Due to the Montegro holiday, the council meetings for February, March have been scheduled for the second and fourth Tuesdays of each month instead of the first and third Tuesdays. Meetings will return to their typical date in April. I do not have any announcements. I see Councilman Nakhan, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just want to make sure that everybody was aware that we do have a hazardous waste day coming up, which I think is a wonderful program. It is March 6th, from 8:00 a.m. to 12:00 noon at the Cajun Dome. So everybody who has some hazardous waste or things that are hard to dispose of, you're able to bring it by there at that time. There are certain lists of things that will be accepted or not accepted, and you can find it on a Lafayette Consolidated Government website when the public works know before you throw. So please look into this and please do your part. Thank you for that. Next, I want to make sure that everybody's aware that in the beginning of March, from the 1st to the 14th, the Lafayette Police Department will be conducting a traffic safety campaign. They'll be having a special emphasis toward the detection of enforcement violations regarding traffic violations. So please be careful when you're driving. Make sure you adhere to the rules of the road. This is for everybody's safety and also for your pocketbook. Last but not least, we all had a terrific event last week. Everybody was affected in one way or the another. And I just wanted to call out kudos to the LUS for their work they did in making sure everybody's powers were restored for the water service that they provided. Many, many people had actually no issues, and they were very prompt in everything they did. Also, public works in providing safety in barricades and road enforcement, assaulting where necessary, shutting down the roads where it was important to do. And last but not least, our first responders who were out there blocking the dangerous areas so that traffic wouldn't pass through. It's all about public safety, and I think our local government, as I say, the departments we have that I noted, performed very well. And I think they really deserve a round and say thank you very much for what they did for us, to help us all as a community. Thank you so much, everybody. Madam Chair, that's all I have.
Thank you, sir. Executive Mayor report. Mayor, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good evening to the City Council and again to council staff. Thank you for your courtesies and what you do for us and to all the members of the public who took the time to be with us. Again, we just thank you. Without you, we wouldn't be here, and without you, we wouldn't have the guidance we need to serve you, because that is what we do. That's our mission, is to serve you. So, very important night tonight, Madam Chair. I want to echo everything Councilman Nakhan mentioned about our first responders. And, you know, look, we have a jewel here in LUS. I mean, we really, we really, really do. And there are citizens in our state right now that have water, whether it's potable water, non-potable, purely because of the efforts of our community. Once we had Lafayette secured, our director reached out proactively to go step into the governor's office. We were in constant communication. And try to be a good neighbor, because you never know, we may need them in the future. So just very proud and echo everything the councilman said. Now, that being said, again, very important night tonight. We are going to introduce our first-ever administrative law judge for the city and parish of Lafayette. As you recall, the city planning commission, the parish planning commission, the city council, and the parish council unanimously voted in favor of the Lafayette Development Code. And part of the reason for the Lafayette Development Code was efficiency. And this administrative law judge position will remove layers of bureaucracy but add a layer of due process, fairness, equity. And I will tell you, everything I know about this gentleman that I'm going to call up is he is a man of integrity. He is a man of hard work and preparation. He's a very learned attorney. Our community is blessed to have him as an attorney, and we are very blessed to have him to our soon-to-be judge here in Lafayette. So with that being said, we did introduce him at the parish council, but we reserved all the fireworks for the city council. No pun intended, it was chief. Chief Menlo is not here? Good. Disregard that comment, chief. No fires. There we go. So, we will officially administer the oath of office, which would be administered by our city parish attorney. And I would ask that his family join us, and I will robe him. And then, with your permission, Madam Chair, if he could give a few brief remarks to the council.
Sure, absolutely. Come on up. And both mics are hot, so... Oh, I'm so sorry. Yes, please.
That's okay, Madam Chair. I just want to thank, of course, the mayor-president for having the confidence in my ability to lead this new effort. I can promise everybody that this is going to be, okay, thank you so much, this is going to be incredibly efficient. We're going to move really fast. We're going to take something that's ordinarily done in our civil litigation session. We're going to take it out of there, we're going to put it in an administrative session, and we're going to move really fast. So we're going to be very careful and wise with taxpayer dollars. We're going to make sure we're efficient. And we hope that it grows bigger than who we are today. And so, thank you again, thank you, council. Thank you, mayor-president. Thank you, city parish attorney. I look forward to the opportunity to serve this community and show how much I love where I live and work. Thank you so much.
Thank you. And Mayor, that was all you had?
Congratulations, Judge Bressard. That's all I have.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Moving on to presentations, Jeremy, will you please read?
Black History Month presentation.
Pat Lewis and Glenn Lazard, you have the floor, gentlemen.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to share a few highlights. Last Tuesday, last couple of weeks ago, we had a, I did a presentation for Wilford Pierre. I gave him an award, I standing award, Trailblazer Award, actually. There's a lot of things that have been going on in Lafayette, especially in this area here, the Katie Anna area, as far as black people doing things, fantastic things that a lot of people may not be aware of. Back in the 50s, early 50s, obviously around 1954, there were four black ladies that integrated USL. At that time, it was called SLI. A lot of people may know about it, but a lot of people do not know about that. And what happened, there was a big case. In fact, a lot of people know about Marshall Thurgood. He was down in Lafayette to, you know, helping with the case here about blacks having the right to go to school. I just want to read a little bit about it, and then I'll tell you some more. The four Who Would, the names were Claridelle Constantine, Martha Jane Conway, Shirley Taylor, and Charles Singleton. These were persons who filed a lawsuit in 1954 to seek to be allowed to attend their local university. We call it now ULL. Some people, I graduated, at the time it was called USL, University of Southwestern Louisiana. The name has changed. At that time, the suit was filed, ULL was not desegregated and did not allow persons of color to attend based on their race. So we know all about segregation and what have you. So certainly, when you were young, everybody had their own school. When I say everyone, people of color had their own school, and other people, white folks, had their school. That's just how it was. ULL tried to have the suit dismissed on the grounds that, among others, the plan could attend the black university. So in other words, if you was from Lafayette and you wanted to get a college degree, ULL did not want you to attend. Your charge you had to do was go to Southern University or Grambling. How far is that? Southern is about 89 miles from here. Grambling is even further than that. So you see how difficult it was for people of color to get a four-year college degree? That's how it was. Was it, was it law? But was it right? No, it wasn't right. So again, they had to go 89 miles away at Grambling or Ruston. Therefore, the plans were not being able to receive a college education. ULL based their denial of admission of their interpretation of the Louisiana Constitution. Again, that was a constitution. The plan is counted, but opposed all of the qualifications to attend ULL except that they were Negroes. Admission was denied solely on their race. They were denied solely on their race. The case was settled out of court with desegregation of ULL and admission of 76 African-American students in the fall of 1954. Four years later marked the first black graduate, and her name was Christina Smith. In 2004, 50 years after filing suit, the four Who Would were recognized and given honorary degrees as a mark unveiled at the corner of Reg Street and St. Mary Boulevard, recognizing courage, faith, justice, and knowledge, pull of progress. At that event, when they were receiving the honorary degree, Ms. Shirley Taylor said, "I wasn't only thinking about myself at that time, but of other students who could not afford to go to other colleges." So again, she was thinking about, not just her, but she was thinking about students that wanted to go to USL or ULL, that we call it now. They had the education, but to get there, to get to that university. So that's what she was really thinking about. And her struggle were not in vain. Ms. Constantine Bressard stated, "What we did then is no longer gone unnoticed. It feels wonderful to have opened the way for so many other students." As I said, Ms. Christina Smith, she was the first African-American to graduate at ULL. Well, it was SLI. But as she graduated, you know, everyone that graduated from high school, what have you, have a big commerce, a big enjoyment time. You're enjoying your graduation, all your students is walking with you. But Ms. Smith, she walked alone. When she graduated, no one walked with her. So can you imagine how she felt? Because she was the only person of a different color, African-American. No one walked on the side of her, in front of her, in the back of her. She was all along. There was a little history about four ladies that, or three ladies and another gentleman, and then one of them that was the first black to graduate. But I'd like to also recognize someone here that, if you look to my left, you do not see her. I don't know why, maybe because I don't know if she don't know I'm going to do this, but I've asked her for a lot of things. I have a recognition that falls under the radar. I want to recognize someone that been following, been under the radar for quite some time, probably because she wanted it that way. I had to ask her four, five different times for some information. This person was featured in a statewide newsletter for being the first to accomplish this in the entire state. I am doing this today because she deserved to be recognized as a person creating a piece of black history in our community. But what's more important is that she is not the only, first black person, but she is the, I'm sorry, she's not the only, but she's the first, the only one to accomplish this, not only in our community, but the entire state. I'd like to read an article that she was in a statewide newsletter acknowledging her accomplishment. Veronica Williams. She just walked in. Lafayette because first in Louisiana to serve various capacity. We want to extend a huge congratulations to Veronica Williams as she becomes the first person to serve as clerk of council for a city council, a separate parish council, at the same time under one form of government. Also, she has served as clerk of the council for three different types of legislative branches. That's correct. Three different forms, including city council, parish council, consolidated council. If there was any learning curve, no one could tell you. A pride member of Williams happened at the first meeting, a parish meeting, a joint council meeting, then a city council meeting, where it was publicized that, how surprisingly, surprisingly, the meeting was went well. Again, I'd like to, Veronica's tough. It is tough to be a clerk for one council, yet you perform for a city council, a parish council, and a joint council. I want to be the first to acknowledge you today on your achievements and accomplishment and say, "Congrats," and thank you. Thank you, Veronica. Stand up. Again, she does, she does a terrific job. She handles the, if some of you guys were here before, the parish council, she handled the parish council, like I said earlier. She keeps everything in line. And there's something that, the agenda, she's the one that helped prepare the agenda, put the agenda together. She's the one that, the go-to person for the council. She is the go-to person, and she has a wonderful staff. I'm congratulating her, but I'd like to congratulate her staff. She have two of them right now, Jeremy, and then she also have Mr. Joseph Gordon Wills. So again, appreciate all the good work she does. Again, she was and the only black council clerk in the state of Louisiana. Thanks again. Thank you, Madam Chair, that's all I have.
Thank you, sir. I love to joke around that Veronica herds cats all day. So thank you, Veronica, for all you do, for keeping us in line.
Right. And I think they had the article because I'm the first in the state, period, to have ever been over a city council, parish council, a consolidated council, and with the joint councils, so.
Well, thank you. Thank you very much for all you do. Moving on to ordinances for joint, for final adoption. This is a public hearing. Speaker sheets are available for anyone wishing to address the council. The three-minute rule does apply. Jeremy, will you please read?
City ordinance 13, 2021. An ordinance of the Lafayette City Council declaring the building or structure located at 107 Asheville Lane, Lafayette, Louisiana, owned by Darryl K. Thibodeau, care of Gerald J. Block, attorney appointed to be dilapidated and dangerous to the public welfare and ordering the condemnation of sin.
I'm asking for a motion and a second.
So moved.
Motion by Cook, second by Nakhan. I'm not seeing any council discussion. Is there any public comment?
No, sir.
No, ma'am.
Oh, boy. Call for a vote from the council to adopt.
District one?
Yes.
District two?
Yes.
District three?
Yes.
District four?
Yes.
District five?
Yes.
Motion to adopt is approved. City ordinance 14, 2021. An ordinance of the Lafayette City Council amending the Lafayette Development Code so as to reclassify case number ZON 2021-1, 1911, 1913, 1915, 1921, 2000, and 2001, West Congress Street, 766 St. Thomas Street Administrative Rezoning, located generally north of Souvenir Gate, west of St. Joseph Street, and south of Oaklawn Avenue. The particular parcel is being rezoned from commercial-heavy to mixed-use neighborhood.
Can I ask for a motion and a second? Motion by Nakhan? Second by Cook. Council discussion? Councilman Lewis, you have the floor.
I'd just like to know, can you enlighten me about the use, the plan? What is it used for?
Do we have anyone that can? Kathy, come on up. And both mics are hot, so.
Kathy Gilbert, Planning Manager, say the question again.
What is the, basically, I see we doing the rezoning, but what is the use going to be like? Is there a mediation plan or something like that?
The uses already exist.
Okay.
So we're just looking at a pocket of commercial-heavy among an historic neighborhood along Congress, and the uses there are already fit into this new zoning category. So there's nothing proposed. We've just been looking around the city to target areas where the zoning isn't aligned with the actual use of the property.
Thank you.
Yep. Thank you. I'm not seeing any other comments. Is there any public comments?
Yes, Madam Chair, we do have one speaker, Will Tealy.
My name is Will Tealy. I live in City District Two. That's Councilman Andy Nakhan's district. I wanted to thank you for letting me speak. I will be extremely brief. I would just like to ask you to vote in favor of this rezoning. Jared and I own our home in the neighborhood where these properties are located, and we really just wanted to applaud LCG for leading the effort on this rezoning. Having these properties zoned commercial-heavy in such a residential-heavy location is, in my opinion, not a wise idea, and this rezoning corrects that. I also appreciate that this rezoning will not disrupt any of the existing businesses that are currently there. It'll simply protect the homeowners and our quality of life. The mixed neighborhood use, I think, is a good designation, and I think it's perfect for these properties. It allows Lafayette to be pro-business, especially along that West Congress Street, but also respect the homeowners and their property values. So thank you so much, and I ask you to please vote yes.
Thank you, sir. Any other speakers?
No, ma'am.
All right, let's go to a vote.
District two?
Yes.
District three?
Yes.
District four?
Yes.
District five?
Yes.
District one?
Yes.
Motion to adopt is approved. City ordinance 15, 2021. An ordinance of the Lafayette City Council amending the Lafayette Development Code so as to reclassify case number ZON 2021-2, 201 Rendon Drive rezoning located generally north of St. Charles Street, east of Louisiana Avenue, and south of Surrey Street, rezoning the subject properties from commercial-heavy to mixed-use neighborhood.
Can I get a motion and a second? Motion by Cook, second by Lewis. Public, no council discussion. Do we have any public comment?
We did have one citizen who did not wish to speak, who signed in to support the ordinance, and only if you have questions about the...
I'm not seeing any. Let's go to a vote.
District three?
Yes.
District four?
Yes.
District five?
Yes.
District one?
Yes.
District two?
Yes.
Motion to adopt is approved. City ordinance 16, 2021. An ordinance of the Lafayette City Council amending the Lafayette Development Code so as to reclassify the property of case number ZON 2021-3, 600 and 700 block East Ponte de Mouton Road rezoning, located generally north of East Ponte de Mouton Road, east of Ridgeview Drive, and south of Summit Drive. The particular parcel being rezoned from residential single-family to mixed-use neighborhood.
Can I get a motion and a second?
So moved.
Motion by Nakhan, second by Lazard. Any council discussion? Not seeing any, any public comment?
No, ma'am.
Let's go to a vote.
District four?
Yes.
District five?
Yes.
District one?
Yes.
District two?
Yes.
District three?
Yes.
Motion to adopt is approved. City ordinance 18, 2021. An ordinance of the Lafayette City Council approving the appointment of Scott C. Friedman and Cinnamon Mueller LLC as special counsel and authorizing the execution of a contract with special counsel.
So moved.
Have a motion by Nakhan? Do I have a second? Second by Lewis. Council discussion? Lewis, you have the floor.
I'd just like to know who select this group of attorneys?
It's who would like to answer that question? Mayor, would you like that question? All right, hold on one second. Your mic is live.
The legal department.
The legal department? Okay. Were there, I'm sure, I'm just asking this, I'm sure I know the answers there. There were other firms that were interviewed, correct?
I'd call the city parish attorney. I don't know if your mic's hot or not.
Do you have a mic back there? I'm going to assume that works.
This, can you, is it working?
Yes, but do you, please identify yourself. Thank you.
Gregory Logan, city parish attorney. This was actually recommended to me by one of the LUS fiber employees. I spoke to the attorney, Mr. Friedman, and he was competent to handle registration with the FCC of, it's actually our video satellites, 13 of them, satellite dishes. The registration had to be updated to be in compliance. There used to be a firm in Washington, DC that would handle that. It was time to move from them. And don't quote me on this, but I think our total legal fees were somewhere between $1,300 and $1,600. Very, very reasonable quote to get this done. So it's specialized work.
This firm, I'm sure it's a firm, correct?
Correct. Large firm.
Large firm, okay. Now, anyone in this firm, because I know they're from somewhere else, they are licensed in Louisiana, practice law in Louisiana?
They're not representing us in Louisiana on the Louisiana matter. I am not sure. They are Chicago... are a Chicago-based firm with offices in St. Louis. I think the attorney working for us, representing us in front of the Federal Communications Commission in Washington, DC, is approved with the Federal Communications Commission. So far, I do not know that they have done anything touching practicing law in the state of Louisiana.
So there's, again, any attorney firm in Louisiana that possibly could have done that, but I guess.
I don't know that there's any firm in Louisiana that specializes in this type of order. I can research that further and get back to you. This is typically very specialized firms.
Okay, thank you. That's it.
Thank you, sir. Councilwoman Cook, you have the floor.
A quick question. I understand it's probably specialized, and I understand that we need to find attorneys that, that do that kind of special work. I guess, how often, like, it's for, you know, for special situations in terms of how often are we going to be, you know, going to that well for them to do work for us? Is it like just for a one-time thing, or it's not? We don't have to, you know, work with them weekly on things. It's like this is as-needed kind of basis, or?
I think it's as-needed. And the previous attorney, my understanding is, Mr. Huvall worked with him extensively through the years. As I said, this was a very limited engagement to get our satellites up to current registration. I think there were some errors in how our satellites were registered, and we had to correct that to be in compliance with the federal regulations.
So I guess my question would be then, basically, they're coming in to help us with that compliance, take care of those satellite issues, and then how often?
If we need to use them again, I would assume there will be a separate ordinance.
Okay. I just, I didn't know how, if it was something that was, would be that reoccurring, or just curious?
Very limited engagement, and I don't know how often issues come up with the FCC. Since my tenure of one year, this is the first issue that I've been involved with.
Now, what I respect that we need to have an attorney that's very capable of handling that stuff. So I'm not, I'm not questioning that. I was just curious on how often we would be needing these services. I guess it's kind of a guess.
I think it could change. This is the first one in my, my year here. So it could change, and it could be every week, and then we'll, we'll do a, a new engagement.
Okay, well, keep our fingers crossed. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Not seeing any comments. Any public comments, Veronica?
No, ma'am.
All right, let's go to vote.
District five?
Yes.
District one?
Yes.
District two?
Yes.
District three?
Yes.
District four?
Yes.
Motion to adopt is approved. City ordinance 19, 2021. An ordinance of the Lafayette City Council authorizing the Lafayette mayor-president to donate surplus negotiator equipment from Lafayette City Parish Consolidated Government to the new Iberia Police Department in accordance with Louisiana Revise Statute 382319.21.
Can I get a motion and a second? Motion by Lazard, a second by Knockan. Any council discussion? Not seeing any public comment?
No, ma'am.
All right, go to a vote.
District one?
Yes.
District two?
Yes.
District three?
Yes.
District four?
Yes.
District five?
Yes.
Motion to adopt is approved. City ordinance 20, 2021. An ordinance of the Lafayette City Council amending the fiscal year 2021 capital budget of the Lafayette City Parish Consolidated Government in the amount of $2,850,000 by increasing anticipated funds from fiscal year 2018 Federal Transit Administration, Federal Highway Administration Surface Transportation Program revenues and transferring, and transferred into the fiscal year 2021 Section 5307 Urbanized Area Formula Grant Funds within the current budget, along with the required match of $712,500 for use within the Public Works Department Transit Division for the purpose of replacing a portion of the transit bus fleet.
Motion by Lazard, second by Cook. Any council discussion? Not seeing any, any public comment?
No, ma'am.
All right, let's go to a vote.
District two?
Yes.
District three?
Yes.
District four?
Yes.
District five?
Yes.
District one?
Yes.
Motion to adopt is approved. City ordinance 21, 2021. An ordinance of the Lafayette City Council authorizing and directing the Lafayette mayor-president to execute an electric franchise agreement with the city of Scott.
Can I get a motion and a second? I have a motion by Lewis, second by Cook. Council discussion? I'm seeing council members buzzing in. I requested before the meeting to have somebody from LUS come up and speak and give a little presentation. Do we have Lowell or Jeff here for that? There, Chef. Come on down. And I have a couple of council members buzzed in already, but I think if you don't mind, gentlemen, I'm gonna let him give his presentation, because that may answer your questions. Go ahead, please.
Jeff Stewart, Engineering and Power Supply Manager for LUS. This agreement enables LUS to provide service to new customers in the city of Scott who selects LUS. It's, it's a customer choice. And so there are some areas, of course, if you look at a municipal map, city of Lafayette, city of Scott are next to each other, you know, on the, on the west side of Lafayette, east side of Scott. And there are opportunities where LUS could provide service to customers in the city of Scott. We don't have a way to do that today. We don't have a franchise right to serve new customers in the city of Scott. And so what this agreement does, and it, it reflects the city of Broussard franchise agreement and a city of Youngsville franchise agreement that we currently have, it allows us an opportunity to go in and meet with developers, certain areas within their city limits, and offer our services, electric service, as an option. If they choose LUS, we do our best, and we serve them, and we provide the best reliability we can. If they choose someone else, we move on to the next one, and somebody else gets to provide electric service. This, all this allows us is a, is a entry into the door, allow us to sit with those developers and say, we have an opportunity to now serve you, your electric, you know, whatever your development is, whether it's a neighborhood, a commercial development, or an individual building, we, we have the opportunity now. And there are certain rules around, you know, who can serve what, and we'll follow those for sure. But this is just an enabling-type agreement that allows us to enter the city limits of Scott and provide electric service to new customers only, and they're at their choice. And so part of the agreement is, our obligation is to provide the service, but we would pay a 5% franchise fee to the city of Scott, just like we do to Broussard and Youngsville today. Any additional revenue that LUS collects obviously goes into the calculation for in lieu of tax contributions and so forth that the city itself receives. And so we're looking for ways to expand our service territory. We don't want to overextend ourselves and, and get into a bind where we're halfway across the parish and, and customers are out of service. We're not going to do that. We're gonna make sure that we can meet all of our internal standards for providing service to anyone, any development that we can provide to. We serve several neighborhoods, neighborhoods in the city of Broussard. We serve a couple of developments, including a grocery store in Youngsville. So we do this today. We provide the same level of service. The, the rates will be out-of-city rates, which is a published rate on our website, of council approval. It's, it's about a 10% adder right now, out-of-city versus in-city. So there's a premium to be out of the city and still, you know, receive our rates. That helps us pay for some of that franchise fee and the additional cost for the extended service territory. But all this does is allow us an opportunity to talk to developers and give them a choice, an option, to choose LUS as an electric provider.
My, my two concerns, Jeff, are, one, because this is a city of Lafayette, you own utility company, is I, I have a fear of us overextending ourselves and not being able to take care of the city of Lafayette, is, do you see that being a concern?
I don't, because it's gonna be case by case. There will be some developments in Scott, just like there are in Broussard and Youngsville today, that we just, it's not a good fit for us. And it's gonna be case by case, and so we're gonna make sure that we extend very strategically. We have to make sure it's financially viable and so forth, that we get a rate of return on our investment and that type of thing, because, you know, electric to us, you know, once you're an electric customer, you're an electric customer for life, unless there's some type of agreement out there for customer acquisitions. But, you know, it, it's very important for us to look at ways to expand our service territory outside the city limits, but not do it wildly or roggly. You know, do it in a way that we can be, be smart about our money. We certainly don't want to put a burden on the city, you know, existing customers or anything like that, but we're also looking at expanding service territory, increase some of our revenue, which will ultimately benefit the city of Lafayette in the long run.
And then, of course, in confirming, right now, we currently do have these agreements with Broussard and Youngsville, and Broussard and Youngsville do not get a say in our way of LUS operations. Would the same apply to the city of Scott?
Same, everything across the board would be the same. The, the five of you and your successors would be the governing authority of LUS, and so you would be the ones dictating rates and contracts and budgets and everything like that.
Okay, that's all I have for now. I see fellow council members have some questions, so I'm gonna allow them the floor. Councilman Knockan, you have the floor.
Mr. Stewart, this agreement is a bilateral agreement between the city of Scott and their council's approval, and Lafayette and our council's approval.
That's correct. City of Scott has had it on their agenda before. My understanding is they're bringing it back on their agenda. But both cities have to approve. Both city councils have to approve, and both mayor, mayor president would have to sign this agreement before it becomes active.
So I caught wind today that the city of Scott council last night did not approve this agreement.
Their last meeting, there were some questions or debate about, should we go forward with it or not? They ended up voting the ordinance down, but we, we understand, we got word today that they're going to reintroduce it at their next council meeting, I believe, which is next week.
All right. So in that regard, I'd like to defer this ordinance until they say they would like to get into this agreement, rather than just throwing something out on the table and give us more time to look at it. I would like to at least push, you said the meeting next week?
They're, I believe they're reintroducing it next Thursday, yes.
I would like to push this to our first meeting in March, please. I'd like to offer deferment until March.
March ninth, March, March ninth.
March ninth.
Okay. Do I have a second for that deferment? Okay, I have two other seconds, so it will be deferred until the next meeting. Is that all your questions, Councilman Knockan?
That's all I have.
Okay. I do have two other council members who do have some questions. Would you all like the opportunity to ask them? Oh, Jeff, did you have something you wanted to add real quick?
It, it, just more of a procedural-type thing, if you do take this action on number 14, number 15 would be the same, just because they, there are tandem agreements.
Okay, okay. And Veronica, did you hear that? Is that there's a deferral? Well, I'm gonna let you say, you want to defer 14 and 15. Is that correct?
Well, when we get to 15, I can.
Right. When we get to 15, you can make a motion separately.
Okay, all right.
That was my intent.
Okay. Councilman Lazard and Councilman Lewis, you still have the, you both still wanna ask questions, or would you prefer to wait?
I'm asking now.
Okay, nope, that's fine. Councilman Lazard, you have the floor.
Jeff, you've answered most of my questions in your presentation, except one, and that is, who pays for the initial, for the initial infrastructure and installation costs if we were to proceed with providing the service?
So if, if, just like in the city or anywhere we serve today, if LUS is extending electric facilities, electric line, we pay for it. And so when I talked about the payback and does it make sense for us financially, we have to make sure that the revenue from the customers that we're going to serve can help us pay for all the facilities that we construct to, to be able to serve those. So we would put up the money and, and construct and install and operate, maintain initially, all the funding for that, and then over time, we will get the revenue to pay that off. So that's some of our case-by-case analysis that we would go through, but we would fund it.
Thank you. Councilman Lewis, you have the floor.
People that, I'm all, I'm okay. We have constituents or residents and citizens of Lafayette, perhaps they, I'm not gonna say perhaps, they did get annexed a few years ago, and I don't see if we, are we trying to give them a LUS electricity?
Our goal is to serve every in-city Lafayette electric customer LUS service. So I said earlier, once, once you establish yourself as an, an electric provider
Right.
to a customer, there has to be a mechanism for there to be an acquisition. So if, if an electric provider's providing service to someone, they, they become annexed later. They're now in the city of Lafayette. We need a mechanism to be able to acquire those. We've had discussions with, with Entergy and Slimco on those acquisitions. We haven't come to an agreement on those, but we are active in that pursuit. So my, I would love this, everybody in the city limits, I would, I would want them on our system tomorrow if, if I had my way.
Okay, but again, my question is, and what I'm saying is that we have people that have been annexed three years ago, and I understand you say that mechanism, but all of a sudden, we have a mechanism for our Scott people that do not live in Lafayette. But now, there's a mechanism in place, but no mechanism for the ones that been annexed three, four years ago.
Right. I, I, I feel you. I wish we had a way to do it. And remember, the franchise agreement would only be for new customers. They're not, they don't exist today. There would be new developments and things, but I, I, if, if you have some ideas on how to acquire those customers, I'm, I'm all on board.
What, what I'm saying, what I mentioned is that, you say new customers. Now, we have people that have been in Lafayette for years.
Yeah.
And they got annexed, and they waiting, they still waiting. And now, we're gonna turn around and give some people that lives in Scott that's not even in the city of Lafayette. And we have a mechanism in place to hurry and get them, if, if we wait till March ninth and put them into the city of Scott, I mean, the people in Scott have utilities from LUS, but people have been waiting three and four years from Lafayette.
Right.
I mean, it's like they being punished. I hate to use the word punished, but it's like they're on a back burner because they're old customers.
Yeah, and, and the way I look at it is, if you're in the city, I mean, you, you should be served by LUS.
Right. I mean, we all board on the same page. The mechanism is not working.
We need a way to do it. You can't just take over a customer. You have to have a way to
Okay.
acquire.
Okay, that answered my question. All right, thank you.
Mayor President, you have the floor. Sorry. You're, you're on.
Okay, thank you. Look, I definitely respect the, the will of the council. If you'd like to defer, I, I respect your decision. I would encourage you, though, in the next couple of weeks, give me a call if you have any questions. I'm with Councilman Lewis, though, if they're in the city. Let's get them in. But Jeff's hands are tied, and Lowell's hands are tied due to the previous franchise agreements and current laws that, that govern those particular transactions. I assure you, I think Jeff would do everything he could to get those customers. And I, I will say this, though, as, as you're considering the options out there, I am very confident in their due diligence. LUS, as Jeff said, you know, they put a lot of calculations, they're, they're engineers, but, but they also have a good financial sense about them, that I, I'm confident that they wouldn't engage new customers if it didn't make financial sense in the long term. And, and as Mr. Stewart said, these are, for the most part, customers for life, pending some kind of change to a franchise agreement or change of law or, or rules outside our control. So I'm very appreciative of their efforts, but I definitely understand why you'd wanna defer it, waiting for Scott. So just please reach out to me if you have any questions, and we can go back and forth, and thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Would you buzz out, please? Thank you. Not buzz off, buzz out. Councilman Knockan, you have the floor.
Thank you. I just wanna make sure something is clear, that these franchise agreements basically are dealing with new subdivisions that have no service. This is new electrical service, period. Those subdivisions that are annexed and already have service from another provider, we can't just walk in and take over that business. There has to be a reason behind that. So unfortunately, annexation doesn't guarantee city utilities. And it's, like they said, they're looking for a mechanism for that. Perhaps a petition could be started within those areas, and you could get 50% plus one to say, we wanna move into the city of Lafayette. That may be a reason for mechanism. I don't know, Mr. Stewart, would that work?
Not so much. I, I, I think, I think if the will of, of the customers is strong enough, any, anything can happen.
That's what I'm talking.
Yes.
If you can just get the customers to say, this is what we want, we're not satisfied with our provider, that would be a way to do it, Mr. Lewis, I would think. So maybe those constituents, you could reach out to them and say that they need to reach out to the Public Service Commission, say, we're not satisfied with our service. We wanna move into the city of Lafayette. That may trigger a mechanism. Then Mr. Stewart could probably open up the, the field, and it would probably help a lot. So I was just trying to clarify some things. Hopefully I helped.
Thanks, sir. Mr. Lewis, you have the floor.
People annex, I think that's the reason why they annex, to get utilities from all Lafayette utilities, water, electricity, what comes with in Lafayette. That's why they annex. So, but I, I know, I know what's going on now. I understand.
Just to give you a, a scope of how many customers, you know, are served by somebody else in the city, I mean, you're probably looking at under 1,000 customers, but, which is a big number. But they're spread out all over, but we, we've identified those areas, and, and we're looking at ways to, to, you know, try to, to do that.
Is that all you have? Thank you, sir. Appreciate. Mayor, did you wanna chime in again? Okay. Mayor, you have the floor.
This particular, correct me if I'm wrong, Jeff, this particular, particular opportunity is only possible because a certain agreement wasn't signed by another utility system. So this is an opportunity that LUS has not had in years, if, if not ever. So I think they're trying to capitalize on it. I don't think deferring two or three weeks is gonna jeopardize that.
It, it shouldn't. You know, as long as, as long as I, as long as you give me answer of questions and I can answer them, I mean, you know, obviously, the five of you determine what we do, but I wanna make sure that you're comfortable in what you're voting on. So if, if, yeah, if you have questions. So if, if, yeah, if you have questions, send them over and we'll absolutely answer them.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, council members, we have, we are gonna go to a vote to defer this ordinance until next council meeting.
March 9th.
March 9th. Perfect. Let's go to a vote.
District 3?
Yes.
District 4?
Yes.
District 5?
Yes.
District 1?
Yes.
District 2?
Yes.
Motion to defer is approved. City ordinance 22.
I didn't do public comment, did I? Okay, I'm sorry. Were there public comments? My apologies.
There were, there, there was no one signed in to speak, but if there was anyone present who wanted to speak on the deferral.
I'm so sorry.
They would be able to, because it's a new motion. It wasn't something, but seeing none, I think the, the vote stands.
Okay, perfect. Councilman Nakian, I see you buzzed in. Do you wanna?
No, I'm just.
Okay, you're waiting. You're anxious, I like that. All right, Jeremy, will you please read?
City ordinance 22, 2021, an ordinance of the Lafayette City Council authorizing and directing the Lafayette Mayor President to execute a street lighting agreement with the city of Scott.
Can I get a motion in a second? Motion by Councilman Lewis, second by Cook, council discussion. I see Councilman Nakian, you have the floor.
Yes, in conjunction with the previous ordinance, I'd love to defer this to March 9th, please.
And I have a second by Councilwoman Cook. Let's go to a vote on deferral. I'm sorry, public discussion on the ordinance as is? Nope. Not seeing anything. All right. Let's go to a vote for the council.
District 4?
Yes.
District 5?
Yes.
District 1?
Yes.
District 2?
Yes.
District 3?
Yes.
Motion to defer is approved.
City ordinance 23, 2021, an ordinance of the Lafayette City Council authorizing the acquisition of certain real property for expansion of the East Sewer Plant and authorizing the Lafayette Mayor President to execute a purchase agreement and sale for acquisition thereof.
Can I get a motion in a second?
Don't move.
Motion by Lazard, second by Nakian, council discussion. Not seeing any public comment?
No, ma'am.
All right, let's go to a vote.
District 5?
Yes.
District 1?
District 1? He's walked away.
District 2?
Yes.
District 3?
Yes.
District 4?
Yes.
Motion to adopt is approved.
City ordinance 24, 2021, an ordinance of the Lafayette City Council providing for the abandonment of a 10-foot utility servitude on Lot 32 of Mouton Addition subdivision located at 411 East Vermillion Street.
Can I get a motion in a second? Motion by Cook, second by Nakian. Any, I don't see any council discussion, public comment?
No, ma'am.
Let's go to a vote.
District 1?
Yes.
District 2?
Yes.
District 3?
Yes.
District 4?
Yes.
District 5?
Yes.
Motion to adopt is approved.
Joint ordinances for final adoption. This is a public hearing and speaker sheets are now available for anyone wishing to address the council. The three-minute rule does apply. Jeremy, will you please read?
Joint ordinance 6, 2021, a joint ordinance of the Lafayette City Council and the Lafayette Parish Council amending Chapter 6 of the Lafayette City Parish Consolidated Government Code of Ordinances relative to the issuance of alcoholic beverage delivery permits within the city of Lafayette and unincorporated parish of Lafayette.
Can I get a motion in a second? Motion by Nakian, I mean, Cook, second by Lewis. Can I, do we, I don't see any council, spoke too soon. Councilman Nakian, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. There was some discussion, I heard, regarding this ordinance or this joint ordinance, and some people were concerned about the fact that there is no hard liquor being delivered with this, and I'm sure there's a reason for that and I would have to agree with it, but this delivery service is only with the delivery of food at the same time. Am I correct in saying that?
Is there someone here that can speak on this? Mr. Josh Burrell and Mary Sloman? I have both available for you.
Mary Sloman, Director of Development and Planning. Your question was in relation to food?
This, this is, delivery of alcohol is only in relation to food. Am I correct in saying that? It, it, they, they are go hand in hand. It's not just an alcohol delivery service?
So state law changed. It used to say that it, you could only deliver alcohol when there was a 30% of the order was food, contained food. That 30% has gone away, so it just has to be accompanied with a food order. There's no, there's no.
So there's no percentage anymore is what it is?
Correct.
So it could be an order of fries and you could deliver a case of beer?
Correct.
Okay, all right. I would just clarify on that. But there are, there are no hard liquor. There's just wine, champagnes or wines and beer and?
It depends on what type of permit you have for your, for your place of business.
All right, so there's possibility of living hard liquors with this then?
If you have the appropriate.
Permit.
Class.
Okay, good. Okay, thank you for clarifying that.
Any other questions?
I'm not seeing any. Thank you very much. You really want those vodka and fries, huh, Mr. Councilman Nakian? All right, I'm not seeing any other public, uh, council discussion. Do we have public comment?
No, ma'am.
All right, let's go to a vote.
District 2?
Yes.
District 3?
Yes.
District 4?
Yes.
District 5?
Yes.
District 1?
Yes.
Motion to adopt is approved.
Joint ordinance 7, 2021, a joint ordinance of the Lafayette City Council and the Lafayette Parish Council authorizing and directing the Lafayette Mayor President to enter into a new exclusive contractual agreement with Acadian Ambulance Service Incorporated and Air Med Services LLC for emergency and non-emergency ambulance services within the jurisdiction of Lafayette City Parish Consolidated Government.
Can I, I got a motion by Lewis. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Nakian. Any council discussion? Not seeing any, any public comment?
We did have five citizens who emailed in who did not wish to speak in opposition to the ordinance. Two citizens signed in in support of the ordinance and did not wish to speak. We do have two speakers signed in, however, I think both are signed in only if you have questions. Allison Farr? Okay, she passes. Troy Guidry?
I am not seeing any council questions. Let's go to a vote.
District 3?
Yes.
District 4?
Yes.
District 5?
Yes.
District 1?
Yes.
District 2?
Yes.
Motion to adopt is approved.
Joint ordinance 8, 2021, a joint ordinance of the Lafayette City Council and the Lafayette Parish Council amending the fiscal year 2021 operating budget and adjusting the manning tables of the Lafayette City Parish Consolidated Government by increasing the use of the city general fund prior year fund balance in the amount of $1,535 to delete one male clerk position and add one clerk-to-position in the Communications 311 Division of the Office of the CAO.
Can I get a motion in a second?
Don't move.
I have a motion by Nakian. Do I have a second? Second by Cook. Council discussion, not seeing any, any public comment?
No, ma'am.
All right, let's go to a vote.
District 4?
Yes.
District 5?
Yes.
District 1?
Yes.
District 2?
Yes.
District 3?
Yes.
Motion to adopt is approved.
Joint ordinance 9, 2021, a joint ordinance of the Lafayette City Council and the Lafayette Parish Council adopting an update of the official drainage map of Lafayette City Parish Consolidated Government and of the Lafayette Parish Drainage District established by ordinance 289, 2001.
I have a motion by Nakian. Do I have a second? Second by Cook. Any public comments?
No, ma'am.
All right, let's go to a vote.
District 5?
Yes.
District 1?
Yes.
District 2?
Yes.
District 3?
Yes.
District 4?
Yes.
Motion to adopt is approved.
Joint ordinance 11, 2021, a joint ordinance of the Lafayette City Council and the Lafayette Parish Council recognizing and ratifying the emergency appropriations authorized by emergency ordinance. Joint ordinance 10, 2021, amending the fiscal year 2021 operating budget of the Lafayette City Parish Consolidated Government by increasing revenues in the amount of $7,287,290.90 in emergency rental assistance program funds received from the U.S. Department of the Treasury and appropriating funds within the Community Development Department.
Can I get a motion in a second? A motion by Cook, second by Lazard. I'm not seeing any council discussion, public comment?
No, ma'am.
Let's go to a vote.
District 1?
Yes.
District 2?
Yes.
District 3?
Yes.
District 4?
Yes.
District 5?
District 5?
Yes.
Motion to adopt is approved.
All right, consider appointments by council as a whole by, to boards and commissions. Jeremy, will you please read?
Appointment to the Protect the City Committee.
Ronald R. Arseneau II has removed his name for consideration. The resumes received for consideration are from Robert Benoit, Stuart R. Bro, James Colvin, Katie Dupre, Kevin Falk, I'm sorry, Keith Falk, Stephen Abear, Daniel Landry III, Stephen M. Lazarus, William Lancaster, Amanda A. Martin, Glenn Shelley Matron, John Mayer, Veronzo Perez Vart, James Proctor, Sarah Goche Roy, Lori Toops, Jackson G. Boss, and James Colin Wayne. Can I ask for, I'm opening the floor to nominations. Councilman Lewis, you have the floor. Stuart Bro is up for nomination. All right, would you clear?
Lord Toops.
I have Lori Toops. All right, clear your floor. Councilman Lazard?
Amanda Martin.
And then we have Amanda Martin. All right, so council members, we are gonna vote on Stuart Bro, Lori Toops, or Amanda Martin.
District 2?
Two.
District 3?
Bro.
District 4?
Bro.
District 5?
Martin.
Martin.
District 1? Stuart R. Bro is appointed.
All right, Jeremy, will you please read?
Appointment to the Protect the City Committee.
All right, we, Ronald R. Bro has removed his name from consideration and Stuart Bro is not available for consideration, seeing as he's already been appointed. The resumes were the same ones from before, but I'll read the names again. Robert Benoit, James Colvin, Katie Dupre, Keith Falk, Stephen Abear, Daniel Landry, Stephen Lazarus, William Lancaster, Amanda Martin, Glenn Shelley Matron, John Mayer, Veronzo Perez Vart, John Proctor, Sarah Goche Roy, Lori Toops, Jackson Boss, and James Colin Wayne, Colin Wayne, sorry. Do I have nominations? Ms. Cook, you have the floor.
I'd like to nominate Bill Line Decker, William Line Decker.
William Line Decker has been nominated. Clear your floor. Mr. Nakian?
Amanda Martin.
Amanda Martin has been nominated. I'm not seeing any other nominations. Council discussion, public comment?
No, no, ma'am.
All right, let's go to a vote for either William Lancaster, Line Decker, and Amanda Martin.
District 3?
Land Decker.
District 4?
Line Decker.
Line Decker.
District 5?
Martin.
District 1? District 2?
Martin.
William Line Decker is appointed.
Appointments by council members, mayor, president, and/or any other district appointing authority. Jeremy, will you please read?
Joseph Catalin is appointed by District 1 Councilmember Pat Lewis to the Protect the City Committee effective February 23, 2021. Mark Pope is appointed by District 2 Councilmember Andy Nakian to the Protect the City Committee effective February 23, 2021. Roddy Bergeron is appointed by District 3 Councilmember Liz Abear to the Protect the City Committee effective February 23, 2021. Jan Swift is appointed by District 4 Councilmember Nanette Cook to the Protect the City Committee effective February 23, 2021. Tina Shelvin-Bingham is appointed by District 5 Councilmember Glenn Lazard to the Protect the City Committee effective February 23, 2021.
All right, Councilman Lewis, did you have a question? Okay. Councilman Lewis, you have the floor.
Okay, everyone that has been appointed to, for the, the committee, Protect the City Committee, the clerk will be in contact with you guys in the next couple of weeks to let you guys, let you know where the meeting will be, the time and the date, so give us a couple of weeks and that way we'll let you know. It'll be somewhere at the beginning of March, so I just want you guys to be aware of it. You will be notified when, where, and the time, and thank you for participating in Protect the City.
Thank you, Councilman Lazard. Moving on to introductory ordinances. Can I get a motion in second to introduce Inglubbo? Councilwoman Cook with the motion.
Second.
Second by Councilman Nakian. Jeremy, will you please read?
City ordinance 28, 2021, an ordinance of the Lafayette City Council declaring the city of Lafayette's intention to acquire full ownership of that adjudicated property located at 10102 Denver Circle within the city of Lafayette. City ordinance 29, 2021, an ordinance of the Lafayette City Council declaring the Digby Road Detention Project a public necessity and authorizing the acquisition of necessary rights of way immovable property and other property rights requisite to the construction of said project either on an amicable basis or through the use of the expropriation process if necessary. City ordinance 30, 2021, an ordinance of the Lafayette City Council declaring the Lake Farm Road Detention Project a public necessity and authorizing the acquisition of the necessary rights of way immovable property and other property rights requisite to the construction of said project either on an amicable basis or through the use of the expropriation process if necessary. City ordinance thirty-one, twenty-twenty-one, an ordinance of the Lafayette City Council providing for the abandonment of a five-foot access and drainage servitude on Lot one-thirty A of Old Town at Mill Creek Phase Three A subdivision located at one-zero-eight Homestead Lane.
All right, do I have council discussion on any of these items? I'm not seeing any, any public comments?
We did, we did have, uh, citizen email in support of items thirty-one and thirty-two, and that's it.
All right, pop, perfect. Let's go to a vote to introduce Inglubot thirty through thirty-three.
Third, uh, District four?
Yes.
District five?
Yes.
District one?
Yes.
District two?
Yes.
District three?
Yes.
Motion to introduce Inglubot is approved.
Comments from the public? Veronica, do we have any public comments?
We do have four speakers signed in, the first of which is Ms. Janice Green, and she will be followed by Mr. Mark Pope.
All right, while they are coming on up, both mics are hot, so I ask each of you to line up one after another. This is the time to speak on topics relative the city of Lafayette that are not included on agenda items. No debating or confrontational statements will be allowed. For efficiency, allow everyone the opportunity to speak. Questions will be submitted in writing to the clerk of the council. The three-minute rule will be in effect.
Good evening, my name is Janice Green, a proud Black and African woman who lives in America. We are here tonight in honor of Black History Month, which only proves my point, we are all not considered one race. If we were all one race, there would be no need to celebrate, to celebrate Black History, so separating of the races. If we were all one race, we would be one human race, all afforded the same freedom, justice, and equality with all the liberties. My personal take would be, let's retro back four hundred years. I can only imagine, after Black History Month is over, and any issues of race are brought forward to this body, it'll quickly get back to we are all one big happy race. That's a safety net that whites use to avoid any real discussion, but the misuse of the Black community tax dollars, taxations without representation, under the Cajun Creole label. I'm not a Cajun, and I'm certainly nobody's nigger or nigga. Cajun and nigga are synonymous words invented by whites with intent to demean Black and whites. So according to the first article of the Constitution, I would be well in my rights in saying, we are all one race, a bunch of raging Cajun niggas here in southwest Louisiana. That sounds harsh, and I'm sure none of you would like to be taxed under that label, neither do I. I implore you all to read the book by Carter G. Woodson, The Miseducation of the Negro. One quote that really pierces my heart is when I hear, "When you can control a man's thinking, you don't have to worry about his actions." I'm very clear in my thoughts and my actions, because I hold the master's key, and I've unlocked my own psychological damage of what four hundred years has done to oppress Black people here in America. I'm aware of the conflicts that's ahead, and I want this body to understand, enough is enough. A little white lie is just a lie that's been covered and protected under the fabric of America. So it takes a real sense of humanity and courage to address this issue and find the resolve satisfying to all. I would like to quote Dr. King, "The time is always right to do what is right." So if any of you have any humanity, let's stop playing games and take it real and do what needs to be done.
Thank you, ma'am.
Next speaker is Mark Pope, and he's provided a written statement that I'll give to you guys, and then he will be followed by Jonathan Prejean.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Williams. Hello, council members, Mayor President and staff. I'll knock this down a little bit. So I'm, I'm addressing the city marshal issue. I know it's been deferred. I looked into it, I did my research, it was done. I don't know if it's going to come back, it seems like it's still in motion, so I'm going to give you what I have. I've given you a written statement, and I, I, it could be, my guess is it may come up in the budget. We're only a couple of months away from the budget beginning. So I, here, here's where I am. I understand that the city marshal wants to restore the trust and credibility of the marshal's office. Understood. I don't think this is the way to do it. Two deputy marshals for security is, in my opinion, needless expansion of our local government. Deputy marshals do have the authority to provide security outside of the court system. However, their principal role, and I will read state, straight from the state statute, "The marshal is the executive officer of the court. He shall execute the orders and mandates of the court." Key word here, in the execution thereof. And in the execution, in the orders and mandates of the court, shall make arrests and preserve the peace. So he has the same powers and authority of a sheriff. That's indisputable, it's here, but it's in the execu-, in executing, being the executive officer of the courts. In two thousand nine, City Marshal Earl Nicky Peckard sent in a request to the Attorney General for an opinion. Can deputy marshals provide security at the Lafayette Airport? The answer was yes, but it was quite convoluted. Marshal Peckard backed out because of those complications. He said not going to do it. Couple of the takeaways from that Attorney General's opinion, again, for the attorneys in the room, two thousand nine. City Marshal cannot enter into a contract without concurrence of city parish government. They recommended itemizing the duties of the deputy marshals that would be hired for security, because their duties are to issue warrants and subpoenas, and so on and so forth. So what do I propose? I give you, in my, in my writing, I give you my proposal. The marshal wants to strengthen his community connection. Fine, I understand that. Let's, I suggest hiring one city marshal who enters into a contract, the marshal's office enters into a contract with LCG. The, the duties are itemized, the costs are shared. LCG pays half of that one marshal, the marshal's office pays the other half. It's there written, good luck to you, and, um, hope you do the right thing.
Thank you, sir.
Jonathan Prejean, followed by the final speaker, Wallace Senegal.
My name is Jonathan Prejean.
I'm sorry, Jonathan, hold on one second, I'm going to let the buzzing stop. All right, go ahead, sorry.
My name is Jonathan Prejean, I'm a, I'm a disabled vet. I didn't join a Black Army, I joined the United States Army, and I served proudly. I'm also a victim of police brutality here in the city of Lafayette. Uh, I was ruptured. On a traffic stop, I was a passenger. This is doctor's papers. Stating I was ruptured, I had three surgeries. Two hydroseals and a, uh, I had a hernia, it developed into a hernia. Uh, I have bills. Oh, Joy Robishow sets, she offered me fifteen hundred dollars. The bill from the VA, uh, from Tulane, is over a hundred thousand dollars. I, uh, I'm here to get closure, and this is not the country I serve. This is not the man I voted for. This is not what's supposed to be happening. The car was stopped for dark tint, a ticket wasn't even given. I did not commit a crime. This happened in my yard. I need closure, and fifteen hundred dollars won't close this. I will not go away, I'm lack of pain in the rear, and I won't go away. And I ask, I'm asking the city of Lafayette to give me some closure, okay? If you need me, you need me, you need me, I'm here. I am that citizen. I'm not no fake, I'm not, I'm not prejudiced. Jimmy Reshaw is a good friend of mine, he's a white police officer. Ed Washington is a good friend of mine, he's a Black police officer. I have nothing against police officers. What I have against policemen's is bad policemen's. This man committed a crime of sexual assault. May second, two thousand seventeen, I've been suffering. I, I suffer from major depression and anxiety from the VA. I don't have to go through this, I shouldn't have to go through this. I'm a citizen of a taxpayer, and I need somebody to stand up with me. I shouldn't be in this alone. I don't know what's wrong with y'all, how y'all was raised, I was raised by a woman, and she raised me right. She didn't raise me to treat you bad. I joined the army with good intentions, okay? What this policeman done, Black police officer, whenever a Black man encounters with a Black police officer, it is not good. It is not good. Some white police officer are not good. Those people need to be fired, not put in another position. He shouldn't have had a job, he should have been in McDonald's. He's not to be protecting my sons and my children, my grandchildren, I'm fifty-nine years of age, I got both. Josh, you need to really get into it, this is not, and you know, this is wrong. Fifteen hundred dollars? I wish you would tell Tulane, they shouldn't have charged a hundred and ten thousand dollars. That was for, that was only two surgeries, the hernia and one hydroseal.
Thank you, sir, your time is up. Uh, make sure.
I have four seconds left. I have four seconds left.
Sir, you're done, the time.
Yes ma'am, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, and I do appreciate you.
Make sure Veronica Williams has all of your contact information, and, uh, that way we can make sure to contact you tomorrow.
Final speaker, Wallace Senegal.
I wasn't planning on coming and speaking this evening. Good evening, everyone. I want to try to publicize this a little bit, you know, Black Pages, Lafayette, nineteen edition. So if anybody know anyone that need, uh, one of these, very interesting, you know, we got to know about our neighbor and everything, we always talk about shop Lafayette, and well, sometimes we don't shop the way we're supposed to shop, and that's Black. Okay, now, Patriot, you know, a young lady got up here, and first of all, let me thank Councilman Pat Lewis for bringing their history up of LSU, USL, or USL, you know, back in the time of fifty-three, I remember that, you know, 'cause my aunt was involved in that, and that was, uh, Ms. Smith, you know? She was very much involved in that. I was too young to understand what was really going on, but I knew all the threats that she got, I remember the threats, uh, them passing, taking off her car door, and she's getting out her car, so all this I remember. But anyway, I have a, a Bible, it's called the American Patriot Bible, and that Bible come from the capital of Louisiana, you know? And in that Bible, I happen to read, "I am writing these things to teach my people how to act in all circumstances. I want the simple mind to be wise, and the wise mind to be wiser into the nugget of truth, and all we asking for is let's keep American history, true American history, not the lies of history, but the way American history really should be." And on that note, I thank you guys for giving me this opportunity, and my name is Wallace Senegal, and I approve this message.
Thank you, sir, appreciate it. Is that all of our comments?
Yes ma'am.
All right, and with that, I adjourn the regular city council meeting. Thank you all, have a good night. Thank you.